We're ready to go. I just want to welcome you all to this regular board meeting for May 22, 2023. We, I think we've already done the roll call. So the first thing I would like to do is we're joined by two members of our InterCity Student Council. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name's Macy Saha. I'm the president of InterCity Student Council and I go to Prebble. I'm a senior and this is my last board meeting.
Is it?
Yes, it is.
Hi, I'm Hallie Dessart. I'm a senior at Prebble and I'm a representative of ICSC.
Is this your?
Also my last board.
Well, it's been a pleasure to have you at our board table and to hear any, any input you've chosen over that time to share with us. It's always, it's always really welcome and I hope whoever comes after you will do the same. So, okay, moving on. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um. Would someone please read the mission statement? Go ahead.
We educate all students to be college career and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Nancy. And now I will read the land acknowledgement statement. We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. All right, next on the agenda, InterCity Student Council report. Take it away, guys.
For East, we have the passing of the gavel for student council officers. They finalized their senior ball plans. They have, they had a band concert on May 17th. They had dress up days for seniors this week as well as food trucks. They also had a choir concert this week. Their musical for next year is announced and it's Matilda and they also have finals coming up. For J-Doll, they had an entrepreneurship seminar meeting with community members, learning how to run a food truck business. They have an event night coming up on June 1st, which is food truck sales with one of the class selling coasters and their profits are returned to the students and those who contributed. And they have a Trees for Tomorrow trip, which was recently held.
At Prebble, we had prom and then we also just had senior ball on Friday. We had a field day for the seniors as well on Friday. We had a choir concert on May 17th. We had food trucks and then we also had our spring fling cookout last Thursday, which is just kind of like a picnic. And it was planned by the PTA and then our finance bowl took third. At Southwest, they hosted the FRCC conference meet for track. They're also hosting a middle school track meet. Whole vault, there was a record broken there at the conference meeting. Um, the band concert was Thursday night. The music banquet was also last week and then senior ball was a few weeks ago. At West, the boys tennis and track have been doing well. They have a lot of athletes that are improving. Some students went to Trees for Tomorrow. Um. I don't know what that is. Well, there was a fundraiser selling donuts for an upcoming dance. Asian clubs sold crab rangoons also as a fundraiser. And then choir and orchestra concert is on, I think it was yesterday or today, today at 7:00 PM. And for all the schools, the AP and IB tests are done now. The sports are wrapping up as well and then we have graduation coming up.
Okay. It's a busy time for our district. Okay, um, thank you very much. Next, we're going to have a public forum and then we're going to, we'll take those, thank you very much. This in the order that they were given to us. So first is Lisa Kartish. Can you, you have five minutes and please state your name and your address.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Kartish and my address is 2592 Remington Court in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening and I want to thank each of you for your service and dedication to the Green Bay community. I'm here to talk about concerns regarding the proposed relocation of the Leonardo da Vinci schools from downtown Green Bay to Webster Elementary School in Alloway. I have already raised these concerns with local school leadership, district leadership, and community leaders. I feel it is important to share them with you as well because you are the voting body responsible for making the final decision on the proposed schema. ATS R communicated that the rationale for closing buildings was primarily based on two items. Number one is improving utilization and cost savings. And number two is focusing on buildings with the lowest educational adequacy scores or the oldest buildings with the least recent investments. Based on this criteria, I think it's important for you to know that there are seven schools in the district that are older than Da Vinci that will remain open in this schema. It's also important to know there are 23 schools in the district with lower average educational adequacy scores than Da Vinci that will remain open in this schema. As far as cost is concerned, when you're looking at the total combined high and medium priority costs or investments that are needed, Da Vinci has $900,000, of which only $3,000 of that is high priority or an urgent need. On the other hand, Webster has $3.1 million of high and medium priority costs with over half of that being high priority or an urgent need. Essentially, the district is asking Green Bay taxpayers to spend $2.1 million more to move Da Vinci to Webster than it would cost taxpayers to keep it at its current location. One of the board's guidelines to the task force was to respect recent investments. The Da Vinci school site was completely renovated and remodeled at a cost of $5 million less than 10 years ago. This renovation touched on every area of the school and included all new mechanicals, technology upgrades, security, and energy efficient design and lighting. In addition, classrooms were carefully designed to maximize efficiency and meet the needs of gifted learners. The proposal to relocate Da Vinci school does not respect taxpayers' recent investments and is clearly fiscally irresponsible. Undersized classrooms were reported as an issue at Da Vinci. According to ATS R, only 10% of Da Vinci's classrooms are right-sized. In conversations with district leadership to understand this metric, I learned that the district adopted a guideline from the state of Minnesota when evaluating our schools. I am not sure why the state of Minnesota was arbitrarily selected, but I do know that no such metric exists or is required for the state of Wisconsin. While square footage could be an indicator of efficiency, the more important metric is how effectively the square footage is utilized. I think it's important for you to know that on average, there are 24 to 26 students per classroom at Da Vinci. These classrooms are not overcrowded and they operate extremely effectively. If you have any questions or doubts about this, I encourage you to tour the building during the school day to see how the classrooms are utilized when school is in session. I assure you, you will be impressed. Lack of green space was another reason cited by the task force for this proposed move. Da Vinci is in an urban area and of course, as a result, has less green space. The district, however, has also stated in a separate communication that the lack of green space at Da Vinci and Aldo Leopold is not an issue because they are a choice school that does not have athletic teams requiring green space. I'm a bit confused about the district's position on this issue, but I can say as a parent of a student at Da Vinci, there is adequate green space for our students. In recent communication with district leadership, I learned that they have engaged in conversations with the village of Alloway about potentially obtaining properties from the village to enhance or expand current Alloway schools. My question for you, why has the district not had these same conversations with the city of Green Bay? The Da Vinci school and the city of Green Bay have a history of working closely together to better the school and to better the local community. I have engaged in discussions with several city leaders over the last month and these leaders have expressed a very strong interest and commitment to maintaining Da Vinci at its current location. And finally, I want to close with a request for the board. Please reflect on the following items. The overall goal for this portion of the facility's master plan is cost savings. Secondly, moving Da Vinci to Webster will negatively impact the founding principles and curriculum of the school. And finally, moving the school will have a negative impact on the downtown Green Bay community. As a board, you have the ability to amend the proposed schema, approve it in whole, or approve it in part. ATS R and district leaders confirmed that Da Vinci is not a linchpin for any other recommendation included in this plan. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to remove the proposed relocation of Leonardo da Vinci school from consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Lisa Knuth. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Knuth and I live at 615 Edgera Drive in Green Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the parent of a Da Vinci seventh grader and he's been at the school since kindergarten. The proposed relocation of the school will not affect our son. Despite this, I am here today because the task force has made recommendations with insufficient data, with insufficient supporting data. Their analysis is lacking an informed perspective with zero representation from those actually within our schools. The idea that the current Da Vinci building is not conducive to learning is absolutely absurd. We have former Da Vinci students attending colleges from Stanford to Harvard and they would beg to differ. This building was created and designed with such attention to detail. It is a productive, safe, and unique learning environment that successfully caters to a K through A population. The current downtown location was chosen with purpose. The district administration at the time and Mayor Schmidt worked closely together to make Da Vinci a key component in the gateway to the downtown area. The school's presence in the community is a source of pride for the student body and also the surrounding neighborhood, even earning itself a historic preservation award in 2016 for maintaining and restoring the original architecture features. The Da Vinci learning model thrives in its current location. Part of this model is for Da Vinci students to be involved in the community, engage with city leaders, make visits to City Hall, the police station, and the courthouse, and it's adding a real-life perspective to their learning. These critical objectives are easily met in their current location. Students strategically come to this school from all over northeastern Wisconsin. The central location is crucial to the expansive population that currently attends Da Vinci. The current location was chosen to make it easily accessible for everyone, no matter where you're traveling to the school from. 43.3% of our students are open enrolled into the Green Bay school district. We need to remain centrally located in order to make it equitable for all families to attend and to keep bringing those additional dollars into the district at a time when they are so badly needed. We have adequate media resources. The task force has issue with the school not having a full-size library media center, which should not be a concern when there is a 90,000 square foot public library, just six minutes walking, six-minute walk down the street. And online resources are plentiful and very cost-effective. Having been awarded the best elementary and middle school in the state of Wisconsin, it is clear that there is no need for concern regarding access to media resources. The task force has stated that the current combined gym cafeteria is not desirable, but the site is too small for an addition. I would like to know who decided that the site is too small. In early 2020, as the PTO president, I worked with the current Da Vinci principal to have an architectural firm look at the possibility of building a commons area onto the school and we were told that there would be a possibility to do so. Our plans to continue this project were quickly derailed by COVID, but we should be given the opportunity to revisit this. Seeing as how the Webster site would also need a similar addition, it only seems fair to assess the possibility of an addition at the current location. The task force was correct when stating that the buildings were originally constructed in 1929 and 1938, but what they failed to take into account, like Lisa referenced, is the $5 million in strategic upgrades and renovations plus $400,000 in private and community donations in 2014 and 15. Aldo Leopold was built in 1910 and to date has had far fewer renovations than Da Vinci and the task force does not seem to have issue with the age of that facility. In closing, these are the facts that I would like you to keep in mind when making your decision. Capacity at Webster will not be significantly increased once renovations are done at that facility to accommodate middle school students. Webster's high priority renovation cost is $1,679,200 versus $3,000 at the current Da Vinci site. The task force keeps referring to the age of current buildings being a large factor in the recommendation, but again, there's no mention of the total gut renovations that occurred at the facility in 2014 and 15. This is clearly not an aging facility. The urban learning environment and the opportunity to have the students be part of the downtown community only adds to their diverse educational experience. There is an overall lack of an integrated perspective that has led us to, that has led to the recommended schema the task force has presented to you. I implore you to dig deeper into the facts, which should lead you to a vote to keep Da Vinci at their current location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Paul Kartish. Please state your name, your address, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paul Kartish. I live on Remington Court in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Thank you for your thoughtful service to our community. I come to you to speak as a taxpayer, a resident of the city, and a local attorney. I am someone without a vested interest in this matter, as my family will be long gone when this program is implemented. My remarks all relate to how and why the Leonardo da Vinci School for Gifted Learners was targeted for relocation by the district and ATS R. I am still trying to understand how critical data involving Da Vinci's total enrollment was inaccurately communicated by the district to ATS R and subsequently to the task force without meaningful correction. Specifically, the district omitted Da Vinci's entire middle school population from the total enrollment data provided to ATS R. It was only at a task force meeting a few months ago that a Da Vinci leader pointed this out to our interim superintendent and representatives of ATS R. The data was finally corrected, but long after schemas and plans were developed. In another example, a top leader at the district misrepresented Da Vinci's diversity population by a factor of three. She indicated Da Vinci's diversity was only 13%, when in fact, it is three times that at 39%. These are but a few instances where a reasonable person could only conclude that the district's use of data, erroneous as it is, led ATS R and the task force to make misguided recommendations to spend millions of taxpayer dollars to relocate Da Vinci to an unrenovated school of the same size. I am also deeply troubled that there appears to be no one at the district who is responsible for the accuracy of data communicated to the public and used by ATS R. It is clear that the district did not partner with leadership at its individual schools to corroborate any of the data used for the plan, nor check it themselves. This lack of partnering, subsequent verification, and demonstrated inaccuracies by the district is an alarming concern for all taxpayers on a project with such breadth and depth. A week ago, I met with district leaders to review an open records law submission. This, while discussing Da Vinci's missing middle school data and the double spending needed to recreate Da Vinci at Webster, I learned from the interim superintendent that the district was shocked that Da Vinci was targeted for relocation. I imagine when you have little understanding and mastery of your own data, one might be surprised like that. I also learned that the district and ATS R were applying non-Wisconsin and seemingly arbitrary standards to develop this facility's plan. When asked why use a particular non-Wisconsin standard, I was informed in quotes that we had to use something and that that state was geographically close. This is clearly not thoughtful analysis for such an important and expensive undertaking. Regardless of the data inaccuracies, there is a lack of any business case to relocate Da Vinci. It runs contrary to almost half of the board's guiding principles, respecting recent investments, practicable capital requirements, and reducing the budget. When you consider the millions of dollars already invested at Da Vinci and that there is no significant spend required over the next decade, there is absolutely no justification spending millions more of taxpayer money to relocate the school. In spite of the district's hollow green space and arbitrary classroom rhetoric, there is absolutely no need to reinvent Da Vinci at a different location. It is apparent that the district continues to demonstrate a wasteful spending pattern. At least $7 million of taxpayer money has been spent to recently modify or improve several schools targeted for relocation and closure, including Da Vinci, Washington, Dode, Keller, Weekyak, and John Dewey Academy. While the district appears keen to spend good money after bad, I urge the board to hold the district accountable for its lack of planning and process around taxpayer-funded initiatives. Finally, during my meeting at the district last week, I was struck by a comment from one of the district leaders regarding the lack of a business case for relocating Da Vinci. I had mentioned that I would not be able to justify this type of business case to a company's board of directors, nor would I even try. The district leader replied that this wasn't that type of setting. I may be missing something, but she still needs to convince taxpayers and its school board that there is a compelling need to spend such a large amount of money. In my mind, there is absolutely no difference in this setting. It has to make sense at some level. As a taxpayer, I am shocked that a top leader of the district doesn't understand this. We are passionately committed to seeing the right course of action is taken both now and as a part of any future referendum. After careful review, I am only left with one conclusion. Da Vinci's relocation is neither justified by the factual rationale proposed by the district, nor does it make any financial sense. I am trusting that our elected school board will come to a similar conclusion and remove Leonardo da Vinci School for Gifted Learners from the proposed facilities plan and keep it at its present location in downtown Reba. Thank you.
Sorry. Next, we have Daniel Miller. Miller.
My name is Daniel Mueller, 230 Ryan Street Combined Locks. First, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak. I am not here to argue my pending termination for working with kids outside my MKV program. I am here to shed light on a dire need in the district. I worked at Green Bay East High School and Washington Middle School, two of the most diverse populations in the city. I was a light in the dark school, allowing students a place to vent, talk, be accepted, and valued. My background of four years at Rawhide Youth Services and my trauma-informed care were assets to supporting students going through hardships. Just some of the things that students said to me. My dad is in jail for murder. My brother was just shot and I had to hold him up as he bled all over. I don't want to be here anymore. My uncle, cousin, friends, little sister were just shot and killed, all separate instances. My house got shot up, we are now homeless, and on and on. In the Wisconsin 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it is noted, female students, students of color, students receiving special needs, students facing food insecurity, students who have moved many times, and students of the LGBT community, and students with low grades all reported experiencing greater challenges with less support. Students came to me because I was a safe place. I looked like them and I made sure every student felt value and was given encouragement. I did not push a struggling student away because they were not in my program. Wisconsin State Superintendent Dr. Jill Underlee noted in the 2021 YRBS report, "Learning environments that foster a sense of belonging take on a different significance for LGBTQ+ kids and students of color because the world at large is not always safe for them. As adults and leaders in our communities, we must care for all children. We must commit to doing the work necessary to foster belonging for every child in every school and every community. My heart was to help all students of every color and belief. I was that student and could relate. I dealt with a very vulnerable population of students that needed to know they were not alone and be someone who believed in them and let them know they are important. As a district, we need more adults willing to climb in the hole with a student, talk to them, and then pull them out, not just throw them a shovel and walk away. Education is key, but the emotional health of these students is greater. I was willing to fight for these students because they are valuable and deserve unconditional support, even to the point of risking my job because they are that valuable. Last thought, I challenged the board to review the McKinney-Vento Grant and the ESEA guidelines as there are opportunities for better training and support for the staff that work with these students. I reviewed it and was shocked at what I did not know was all involved. Just like my admin had no idea feeding kids was part of the MKV program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amy Mueller. State your name and address, please, you have five minutes.
My name is Amy Mueller. I live at 230 Ryan Street Combined Locks. I am Daniel Mueller's wife. I thank you for your service. Obviously, you care about children and you wouldn't be here. I've watched and I've listened to the process that Daniel has been put through the last several months. I've witnessed the unprofessional conduct displayed as he was disrespected, lied to, and received numerous attacks on his character. My husband felt a calling to step down from a higher-paying position in a corporation to help young people. His heart is to encourage, support, and be an example to the students. He did that as a football coach and in his position in the GB schools. I helped him set up his first office to be a place where the students would feel welcome and safe. He added encouraging phrases to the walls aboard celebrating the students' value, no matter what they have or have not achieved. He was caring and he had a listening ear. Does that sound like a problem? There is indeed a problem. And the one that I ask you to address this, the administrative process or lack thereof in working with those employees in the district. Because at the end of the day, it's not the adults that will be the most wounded. It's the students. If you continue to abuse those that have hearts to make a difference with this next generation, those students will lose out. We'll be fine no matter what happens, but the students, they have one more example of a man of similar background and experiences who they knew cared regardless of recourse, being publicly shamed for doing so. Ultimately, my husband may lose a job, but the students have lost a source of hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Schmidt. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Jim Schmidt. I live at 509 Spring Street in Green Bay and I'm here to speak in very strong opposition to relocating the Da Vinci school. I reached out to some of you and wanted to explain the city or my position and the effort that we put into bringing Da Vinci in the downtown. Now, I have to say, Laura, I'm disappointed, you know, I wrote you a letter, I called you, left you a message, you know, we supported you, your sign was in our yard and you never got back to me. And it's tough being in a leadership role, but it's important that when people call, we call them back, whether we agree with them or not. I was elected mayor in 2003 and I served the city of Green Bay for the next 16 years, Green Bay's longest-serving mayor. And when I was elected, my top priority, no secret about it, was to bring a downtown to the city of Green Bay that we can be proud of, something that not only we can be proud of. something that not only we can be proud of, but our kids and our grandkids. In that, we put together a plan, and it was a five-pronged plan that called for major development in certain areas, obviously connecting with the waterfront, and we did that with the city deck. We wanted, you know, Class A hotels, so we got a Hyatt Regency, which was all tremendous amount of work, and renovation of the Northland Hotel. Obviously, some commerce with Nicolay Bank and a gifted and talented school, along with some additional green space. The gifted and talented school, I think I worked with four superintendents to bring that school to the downtown. It was, when I first started, it was Swiss School within a school at Langley and met with Terry and a number of people. We ended up finding a location, and we wanted a gifted and talented school as a gateway to the city, something that kids could get engaged with the city, something they could be proud of. We found that building. We purchased that building. We sold it to the school for nothing, under the condition that would be a gifted and talented school. We won out and raised money. I talked to one of the donors today to make that school happen. It was a lot of effort on the city's behalf, and I was telling some people it just didn't get the attention my roller coaster did, but it deserved more attention than that. It was a key component to our downtown. I wanted that school to be something kids can be proud of. And look, I think we need history here. I take people back to the Northland Hotel, and they're like, I was married in that hotel. I graduated. I had a party in that hotel 50 years later. And I think Da Vinci speaks to that, and I want these kids to be proud of the downtown. I want the downtown to be proud of our school district, and I think Da Vinci speaks well for that. I brought with you, if you haven't seen, but this is the authenticity plan. This is the plan that we had people from the school district involved. And it's amazing how many people have changed in the last 15 years, but bankers and city council people. Of course, I signed the plan, but Da Vinci is in this plan and something we worked very hard for. So I'm asking you, as the previous mayor, but of someone who is still very connected in this city and who cares deeply about the future of this community, that we keep Da Vinci where it is. It's a great location. We're going to make it work. Nothing's perfect in this world. We could have torn the Northland Hotel down and built one for $20 million, but we spent $39 million because we wanted history. Suburbs don't have history. The city does. And if we can keep that and make people proud of our community, which we are and we continue to do, Da Vinci needs to stay where it is. And I ask you to support keeping Da Vinci where it is on Monroe and downtown Green Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, this will be our final, our final person, unless anyone else wants to speak. If you do, please fill out a form and submit it to Kinsey. The next person is Michael Krutz. I'm sorry if I butchered your name. I didn't mean to.
All good. Very common. Michael Krutz, 141 Rosaline Boulevard. I came here to represent Leonardo da Vinci School, but everything I was about to say was said much more eloquently by Lisa and Lisa, Jim, and Paul. So I will cede my time, and you can move on to the next item. But I do appreciate, and you know, I certainly wish you the best as you go through this very difficult decision. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That completes the public forum. So moving on, the next item is a consent agenda approval. Would someone like to read that motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion. Okay, Kinsey, I think we're ready to vote. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Moving on to presentations, the next thing on our agenda is the legislative update, which will be done by James Lyerly.
Thank you, Lauren. So we left the legislative update as an agenda item in anticipation that there may be some information about the budget that we could share. Right now, the current legislative stage is, besides the fact that there is some recognition that revenues will be slightly less than predicted, that's the only new input into this status right now. So next month, I'll have the privilege of kind of doing a, hopefully, a robust legislative update with my friend Lynn as we transition this role over to Lynn. So I'll just suggest that we move on. We have a pretty large debate ahead of us.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
With the budget not being presented yet, that still gives opportunity for the public and board members to contact and advocate for funding for public schools, and they can contact their state assembly person or their state senator or the governor and advocate for priorities that they see fit, such as public education funding. It's a question.
That's a correct statement. Yes, absolutely. Everyone can engage in advocacy for public education and contact their assembly person or senators.
I'd just like to add that I recently went up to Manoka. I can't remember if I talked about this at the last meeting or not. An Aqua, sorry. And did my two minutes of testimony in front of the Joint Finance Committee and heard a lot of the same concerns regarding public education and how we fund it and how we don't fund it. And many heartfelt pleas to our state representatives to please do something to save public education in this state and to fund it properly and predictably. So go ahead, Brian.
And I just have a question for the interim superintendent through James, if that's okay. It's my understanding if special education had been funded at the promised or previous amounts and ELL funding had been, that would be roughly $30 million. Am I going off the top of my head correctly with that?
It would be just under $30 million per year.
Just to follow up, that's roughly the deficit that we're facing, correct?
That is correct. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you, James. And we look forward to having Lynn take over this job eventually. Okay, so next, under Action is the 2023-24 Fee Schedule. Go ahead, Nancy.
I move that the 2023-24 Fee Schedule as presented be approved.
Second. Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? All right, we can vote. Go ahead, Kinsey. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. We're about to enter into a very long list of votes on policies, and it'll take us a little bit to get through that. So I guess we'll start with the first one, B, Policy 112.1 Strategic Planning. Would someone please read the motion? You're so good at it, Nancy.
I move that Board of Education Policy 112.1 Strategic Planning as presented be approved.
Second. Any questions? Any discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next is Policy 113, Non-Discrimination in District Programs, Activities, and Operations.
I move that Board of Education Policy 113, Non-Discrimination in District Programs, Activities, and Operations as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Next, Policy 130, School District and School Board Legal Status.
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy 130, School District and School Board Legal Status as presented be approved.
Second. Questions, discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Next is E, Policy 131, School Board Elections.
I move that Board of Education Policy 131, School Board Elections, as presented be approved.
Second. Questions, discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Next, F, Policy 133, School Board Vacancies.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 133, School Board Vacancies, as presented be approved.
Second. Questions, discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Next is G, Rule 133, Procedures for Filling School Board Vacancies.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Rule 133, Procedures for Filling School Board Vacancies, as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion. Andrew.
Can I just get some clarification as to when? Is it, would it be 90 days before there would be a possibility of a request for a random selection? Am I reading that correctly? I'd have to go to, these are, I guess my viewpoint would be, generally speaking, and I think we're mostly just talking about emergencies where vacancies can't be filled for a very long time. But I think, generally speaking, hatching it out with multiple ballots until you figure it out, provided people apply soon, which has not been a problem when we've had vacancies. So is that only very late in the process that it would go there?
Can you tell me what section you're referring to, Andrew?
It would be, maybe 2C, 2C5. Actually, wait, 2C, where's the? I'm sorry, it's 2. I'm sorry, 2A. I think it might appear twice, 2A2. Filling, yeah, filling of vacancies in special circumstances. So I guess, are we just, are we just very deep in the weeds covering contingencies that we've never come close to having but need to be covered regardless?
2A2. You don't get to Section C under 2A2 that talks about doing the five rounds of voting. Then the chairperson of the meeting will declare deadlock and immediately call for members of the board to make nominations for purpose of filling the vacancy by random selection. And then you get, if there's only one potential nominee under active consideration, and the potential nominee does not receive a majority of votes cast in either two separate rounds of voting, the board will then use the procedures in C2 through C5, which is that 90-day process. So this is the third, fourth, fifth contingency plan, should there not be anyone selected for that seat.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that there's nothing that, I would think those are very odd circumstances that must be covered so you don't run into situations where other bodies are going to point one for you. I just wanted to make sure that the, verify that the bar before we would get to things like random selection and so forth is very high, and it is, and nothing close to what we've had before. So in, had in real life here in Green Bay. So thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next is Policy 153, Board Self-Evaluation.
I move that Board Education Policy 153, Board Self-Evaluation, as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next is I, Policy 154, School Board Advocacy.
I move that the Board of Education Policy 154, School Board Advocacy, as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. I should probably pause here for just a moment and mention that we did have the opportunity at our last meeting to talk about all these. So they have been, this is a second opportunity for people to talk about them, discuss them, and ask their questions. But I should have mentioned that at the beginning. So and also that this is all the policies that pertain to the Board of Education, and they just needed up some tweaking and some updating. Thank you, Melissa. All right, next is J, Policy 162, School Board Member Orientation.
I move that Board of Education Policy 162, School Board Member Orientation, as presented be repealed.
Second. Go ahead.
Just refresh my memory, please. We're repealing this simply because it is covered somewhere else, isn't that right?
That's correct. We added this to Policy 133. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Kinsey? Online voting is now open.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is K, Policy 163, School Board Development Activities.
I move that the Board of Education Policy 163, Board Member Development Activities, as presented be approved.
Second, questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next, L, Policy 165.1, School Board Member Conflicts of Interest.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 165.1, School Board Member Conflicts of Interest, as presented be approved.
Second, questions, discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next is M, Policy 171.1, Public Notification of Board Meetings.
I move that Board of Education Policy 171.1, Public Notification of Board Meetings, as presented be approved.
Second, questions, discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is N, Rule 181, Basic Procedures for Board Meetings.
I move that Board of Education Rule 181, Basic Procedures for Board Meetings, as presented be approved.
Second, questions? Brian?
I'm just looking at, I appreciate the work that's been put into this and the discussion regarding a speaker's list on there. I'm looking at C, A3, I believe is what it's listed as. It's the last red part on the motion, and I just want to clarify that my goal with a speaker's list, when I've spoken about using it as index cards, the way it's been done before, someone who hasn't, so when a person has spoken, their card would be taken off, and they'd be, if they requested to speak again, they'd be put at the bottom of the list, which means it kind of reset the whole thing. The way I read that last part, when a member who has not spoken raises a hand to seek recognition, they automatically placed ahead of anyone on the list who has already spoken. That's not my intent with that. It's that they have a list on there. So I would like if that could be stricken with understanding the intent of the speaker's list.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. These are your policies. Yeah, go ahead and tell everyone where they need to look at, again, where this is discussed.
It's right at the end, under Board Debate, the last part in red, on the red line version. And it was previously 1, and it's now 3. Where it says, "When a member who has not spoken raises a hand to seek recognition, they automatically are placed ahead of anyone on the list." That's not my intent with it. Appreciate the wording, though.
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
So this, I think, turned out to be more of what I had in mind when we talked about this. I just hope that we're not creating a policy by which we must have a physical list, because since there are only seven of us, and I mean, this isn't exactly the way I suggested that it be done, but I'm comfortable with it. To me, this simply means you don't get to speak twice till everyone has spoken once.
Go ahead, Brian. I'm sorry, did Laura want to speak? No. Okay.
The intent of this, my advocating for it, is that we're at a table. Sometimes people jump ahead. I'm just as guilty of it, whether you go like this, or like this, or how advocate, how much you go for it. This has been utilized by other groups that I've been in. I think it just brings order to it. I'm not looking to jump into Robert's rules of, you know, for or against or anything on it. I think it just gives that opportunity with it. I don't need a written list after. That's why I suggest the index cards, if we want to just use it as some other way, if it fails on that, you know. So be it, but my intent is not to have the opportunity to jump ahead just so that we have an order and when people are recognized with it. That's all.
Go ahead, Lynn.
And I promise this is the last thing I'll say about it. I just would like to ask, has this been a problem in the past? Is there a need for this?
Anyone else want to talk before Brian talks? Go ahead, Laura.
That was my question. I feel that I'm comfortable asking or calling, making the point that we need to have other people jump in or have the opportunity to speak. I am comfortable with not having it this formal. But there could be, I could be the biggest offender, so maybe I'm completely unaware of needing this in place to avoid all of my comments.
Right.
I've tried to jump around this issue. It has happened, okay? It has happened at times, and it hasn't been a big deal. And we have a very healthy board, but it has happened at times because predominantly people's heads move to the right as opposed to their left. If they're dominant hand, it's happened to me when I sat in that chair. And, you know, it's, we have a healthy board, but I think just recognizing that fact that it has happened. I've tried to dance around the issue, but it has happened during board meetings where I've been bumped by other people based on which motion the head of the person speaking moves, and the chair has a lot to do during the meeting, so.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I know that we watch each other, and like, I point to people when I see their hands so that I do grab her attention. The thing is too, is when there's somebody virtually, that to me is when they really, you know, I think there might be a problem that we continually look for them. But otherwise, I'm pretty comfortable.
Right.
When someone's virtually on there, there's the feature that they can hit the raise their hand button, and we just need to make sure we recognize that on there as well.
Right. Go ahead, James. And then, and then Andrew. Was Andrew first? Sorry. All of a sudden, I've gotten very, like, aware. Go ahead, James.
So I've, you know, I obviously spoke in opposition to this because I didn't see the problems. I appreciate you eliminated the fact that you have felt like you've not been able to participate in the debate at the level that you wanted to. However, what I see is now there's, Robert Rules is a lengthy book because there's exception and then and what, and you know, as we go down this path, I want to make sure that I know how to engage in a conversation or a debate where once called upon, do I need to now understand how many questions I want to ask and ask the floor for that number of questions? Or, you know, as far as, you know, there are rules and stipulations that you can follow. So I know you're not wanting to go down into that depth. I just don't want to be middle of the road and end up with a place where it's not the same problem, but we have the next problem in managing the debate, so.
I guess, I'm just wondering what... I guess, okay, so one fairly extreme example is that I was the only one who had a question about something. So I'm assuming probably we don't, probably no one needs to be writing down names until at least the second hand is up, and then once the second hand is up, they'd start writing down names in case the third and fourth hand goes up. I don't have a problem with the speaker's list. I just don't want to add... You know, if it, okay, if it was obviously not necessary this time because I was clearly the only one who seemed to have an interest in speaking, and no one else stepped up on that particular issue, okay, that one's easy. But then what if it's in between? What if, you know, a couple people talk, but it's pretty clear? That would be my question, I guess, to Brian as the proposer of it.
Laura. Oh, I'm sorry, did you ever, I didn't see your hand. Okay.
I'm just...
We don't have this policy passed yet. So the concept of the speaker's list is not a list. It is seven names on index cards, one index card per person. You raise your hand, you want to speak, but at the top. You raise your hand, someone else is speaking, your name is next. That person speaks, their card is removed. It doesn't have to be a written thing. It doesn't, it's just that way people do not jump ahead with it. I'm willing to make a motion on this after everyone's done speaking with it. That's the concept. There's organized groups that have used this many, many times, and it just lends it to it, addressing James' concern about whether it's a motion. We follow Robert's rules anyways. We're kind of loose with it at times, but sometimes we go off on a tangent, myself included, about speaking about things that are not relevant to the motion. And that's a whole, right now, that's a whole different thing what I'm talking about with this. But, I mean, it's something that a healthy body uses as well, so.
Lynn. Oh, I'm sorry, Laura. Laura's next, then Lynn.
I was just going to say, I don't think, I think if we can just be, if Brian, you know, could share, there's times I was overlooked. I just feel like this is actually adding more than we need to worry about. If we can just make a more, Chair, could you be more aware? Or just check, and you're going to do your best to make that effort. I don't know that this has to be this formal.
Okay, Lynn.
I'm really torn because I have the greatest respect for Brian, and I want to respect that there must be a reason for this. And it does sound very, very simple and systematic. I just know that when we talk about things, we don't necessarily get our ideas in a certain order. And so I don't always get my idea after Laura speaks. Sometimes it's after James speaks, or maybe I don't have an idea until the second time around. And I just hate to think of our chair sitting there shuffling through index cards and looking around to see, is Andrew's turn? Does Andrew have his hand up? I just think maybe we're making things too hard.
Brian?
That's not what it is. It is cards with our name on it. You raise your hand, the card goes to the chair. The chair sees it. Someone else raises their hand while that person's speaking, their name goes on that. Their name is the next card going on. It's not going through and asking, "Do you have something to say? Do you have something to say?" It's when they indicate it on there. It moves straightforward with that.
Okay.
There are people, my name has been mentioned with this, and I'm advocating for this. I have thick skin. My feelings are not hurt if I don't get called on right away. However, just that sheer mention of it kind of puts you at a disadvantage if you're saying, "Oh, I wasn't called on again." Again, we have a healthy board. I get it, but I think it's a strong, it's a safe procedure to have there, so.
Go ahead. Can I make a suggestion? So hearing what Brian is saying is not exactly the formal speaker's list under Robert's rules, which is why the language that I wrote doesn't match what Brian was envisioning as just a way of operationalizing your debate and your conversations. If you just take this out for right now, the speaker's list, and Brian try his card method to see how that, well, try the card method just to facilitate your discussions before adopting something in your policy that's very formal with respect to a speaker's list. And then if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. If it works, then Brian is a genius, and he's partially solved all of our problems. So you're talking about the test pilot? I am. Okay. I would like that idea too, because until I've actually tried it, I can't, I'm having a hard time figuring out exactly what this is going to look like for our current board. Anybody else? Okay, Brian.
I'd like to make a motion that under C, Speaker's List, Section A, from that point on, I'm sorry, everything that's in red on that part. So Board Debate, Section, I'm sorry, I'm going to make a motion that Board Debate, C2, Section A, is omitted from this motion.
No second?
So we're just talking about A? It should also be 3, when you do red line, that really is B, and it didn't come out right. So it's C2A, and then it says 3, but that really should be B. Okay, so from the big, from where it says Speaker's List, all the way down where it says already spoken, that whole entire part is going to be cut. All right, and Andrew's seconded it? Do we need any more discussion about this? Any more questions? Lynn?
Once again, I'm not sure I understand now what I'm voting on. Are we taking out the whole concept of the speaker's list, which takes out the note cards too? Okay.
Okay, and within this motion, well, let's deal with the motion. We can talk about a test pilot later. Any other questions or discussion? Kinsey, do you have the motion? I'm going to do a voice vote. Okay. Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Grub?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Now, we're back to the original motion. Is there any discussion about that? I think we're ready to vote. Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is O, Rule 187, Public Participation at Board and Committee Meetings.
I move that Board of Education Rule 187, Public Participation at Board and Committee Meetings, as presented be approved.
Second, questions, discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next is Policy 188, Virtual Meetings and Board Member Participation in Meetings via Technology.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 188, Virtual Meetings and Board Member Participation in Meetings via Technology, as presented be approved.
Second, questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. And finally, Policy 383. Point two, Curricular Dogs in the School Setting.
I move that Board of Education Policy 383.2, Curricular Dogs in the School Setting as Presented Be Approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Brian, and then Lynn.
I just want to thank Melissa for the amount of time that she put into this policy. I know we received some emails requesting clarification. I addressed this concern, I think it was one of the first things on the board that I had a conversation with interim superintendent, you Melissa on this. And the amount of work you put into this to make sure that we are being responsible with it and not putting ourselves at risk is tremendous. And I just want to thank you for this. Obviously, it's something that we can look at as this becomes more. Evolved with it, but thank you for the time you put in on this.
Go ahead, Lynn. And then Laura.
And, and I also thank you. This was a big undertaking and it, I, I'm very pleased with how clear and complete. And, and it's really well done. I, I do have a, two concerns. One is under Part Three Implementation D. Roles and Responsibilities of the Curricular Dog. Says the curricular dog shall perform those tasks and duties necessary to support specific curriculum-related activities. Projects or instruction and/or student social emotional learning. I get the part about student social emotional learning, but I'm, as a former teacher and a dog owner who's going to be a therapy dog pretty soon. I just don't understand about supporting specific curriculum-related activities, projects or instruction. I don't know what that means for a dog. Can somebody explain?
Go ahead, Brian. Go ahead, Melissa.
So I am not a dog owner and I am not a teacher, but I'm going to try and explain based on the research that we've conducted on this policy. My understanding is that there really are two roles in a school and of course, the socially emotional learning is, is really what has been driving the growth of. The animals in the school, but it also can be with respect to the curriculum of. You're doing a reading lesson. So it's a combined socially emotional and curriculum. A child who's afraid to read out loud might feel more comfortable with reading out loud with the dog supporting them reading out loud. Lessons on Responsibility, lessons on Respect, lessons on those sorts of, of things that may not be. Reading and, I'm sorry, science and, and math, but it may be related to the dog to help support that curriculum.
Okay, Brian.
Knowing some special education teachers, often there's times that students have written in their IEP that they need to work on social skills. And. This would be an opportunity to increase, include that within a student's IEP, the. That's where you could also tie into the curriculum when you're working on the social skills part and behavior modification and coming up with coping mechanisms. To keep you in classrooms and stuff like that. So that's where I've seen it utilized in other spaces as well.
Lynn.
Okay, that makes sense now because sometimes in, with an IEP, there is a curricular need for this. Okay, I'm good with that. Now I have just one other thing and it's a big one. Curricular dogs. Oh my gosh. I understand why we don't want to call them therapy dogs. But curricular dogs, couldn't we just call them comfort dogs? I just think that's a horribly misleading name. I Googled it to see how many school systems have curricular dogs. I couldn't find any. Every time I Google curricular dog. I just found the curriculum in our dog training school will include jumping over sticks and things. And please can we change the name?
I, I don't care what the name is. There are, there are na, there are policies that we did find. Actually, they were sent to me that were, there were curricular dogs. The, the caveat that my colleagues who do what I do across the, the country and the state said was. There are, there's service animals, there's therapy animals, and then there's emotional support animals. And so making sure that you're very clear that this is not the service animal. This is not the socially emotional support animal and that this dog is related to education of children, including the socially emotional. Education, but within the law, a socially emotional animal, it's really part of Title II housing. In order to be able to have a pet in public housing and including college students in their dorms. That animal has to qualify as a socially emotional animal. So trying to stay away from, so that it's not confusing. Because we do have some students who have asked that their socially emotional animal be allowed to come to school and that is, that is not permitted. Hence why my colleagues have recommended the name curricular dogs, but. It's, it's a name, so whatever name you're comfortable with.
So Lynn has an aversion, we talked about this, an aversion to the name. Um, I don't know, I'm sorry, go ahead, Laura.
So this is one of those, I, I had no anticipation of the multiple emails that we would get when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. And so, um. I'm just wondering if a lot from teachers, social workers. That wanted to have this opportunity to do this and not be volunteers with the district. Could you talk a little bit about? Um, I, I guess I'm asking is, is there a way that we can somehow make this so that's an option and still be where we need to be? Do we need to, just how can we make it work, knowing the benefit and value that this has to our students? How can we? Tweak this or make it work so that this would be an option for a teacher or social worker within our district?
And I recognize that we have a lot of very passionate people about this topic and I appreciate all of them providing thoughts on, on just how important this is. The bottom line that this comes down to is if you are volunteering and you're an employee of the, first of all, you can't volunteer for your employer. So all of the organizations that, except for one, that certify therapy dogs. Will not provide the, their umbrella insurance, their, their liability insurance to an individual who's employed by an organization. Who then brings their own animal in the scope of their employment into the workplace setting. The one organization that does allow people to purchase the insurance, the insurance does not meet our liability limits. And so our liability carrier has said one million per individual, three million per aggregate. There was a teacher that contacted us that said she has a one million dollar policy under her homeowners. But then doesn't have that three million. I did reach out to our liability carrier. They have not gotten back to me as to. Whether there's some middle ground. So if, if that's the case, policies can be amended at any time. We can come back, we can. And I think as therapy dogs become more and more prevalent, that insurance companies are going to start to look at this differently. And look at that liability, but really, we've had very good conversations with our liability carrier and she's been here before, you've met her. And she represents municipalities throughout the, the state of Wisconsin and really focuses on school districts. And, and that's the best practice information they can offer. So that's, that's what's driving this.
Andrew.
Yeah, I. It, this seems to be, if, if there's ever a, I guess, a, a stand to be made for something that is. Like a very low-risk thing that an insurance carrier doesn't like. This would probably be it for me. And I'm, as you know, I'm willing to push that probably harder than just about everyone. But this for me would be about the easiest one. That being said, I think as far as tonight goes. I think the things we got as far as employees doing it, let's, let's see if we can revisit and. Uh, amend or add to this policy later and start with, you know, for as far as tonight goes, we know that what we have is, is good.
Brian.
This policy also gives us an opportunity, a roadmap for people that choose to, yeah, there's obviously steps with it. I imagine that police departments that have therapy dogs are going to go through the same thing. I imagine that hospitals that have therapy dogs are probably going to look at this and find out as well. And that. The insurance agencies are going to come up with a solution on this at some point. So this gives us a path, you know, and, and as you said, policies can be brought back. So as this evolves, I think this will be on our plate as well. But once again, I, I support this as, you know, a path going forward. So thank you.
Nancy.
I think it's fine that it's so good for us right now, but I'm, I don't think it's so good for the children. I think at this time where the trauma is so prevalent, the kids are suffering. And I, I volunteer at a school where I see every morning a dog, a therapy dog. And it's, she's handled so well. It's just like unbelievable. And I thought, well, I'm not there the whole day. So I called the teacher that I work with and I said, you know, how do you see this dog fitting in? And I didn't say anything and she just said, oh, the kids will come in and she will be there and they will just like, they just brighten up. You come in with a bad day, you see the dog. I mean, we, when are we going to start really doing things like this to help our kids? Thank you.
Brian.
I think addressing mental health has always been a priority of us. And once again, this is something that is an issue bigger than what we can solve here. But by contacting your state legislators and your state senators about appropriate funding for public education, so we can fully fund mental health services in schools. Is probably going to be more effective than therapy dogs, but therapy dogs are obviously a part of the situation. But again, help from Madison would be fantastic on this.
Laura. I think we can look at this at the macro level or the micro level. And I, I, again, I think with, I think the reward that this brings. To teachers and ultimately students is at this point. The reward outweighs the risk with this implementing it currently, in my opinion.
Lynn.
I, I would like to ask for clarification from Laura. Are, are you suggesting that we should go ahead? Even if the teachers and let teachers bring their therapy dogs to school, even if they can't get the liability insurance that's needed?
Well, I think we have to, I, I'm, that's one more. Is there a way that we can find a win-win in the situation? Not to just. I just want to know, is there something else that we can do so that this could happen and that teachers are not prohibited? Or like, we're still waiting to hear back from one of the carriers. That's, I'm just wondering if there's something else we could do to postpone perhaps.
It sounds to me like what you're implying is that this is evolving with. We can't be the only district who's dealing with this.
We're, we're not, and that's the memo explained how other school districts haven't addressed the liability issue. So I. Again, I sincerely appreciate that we have staff who, who want to address the mental health needs. The, the issue is there was no policy to provide for that in the first place. So how that evolved and, and how that happened. Liability was never addressed at that point and the issues of allergies and the induction of the dog into the school. And none of that was ever addressed. So now we, we do look like the bad guy because we're implementing a policy after. You know, it's almost, is the risk versus the reward, that, that sort of thing. The, this does, this is still allowing dogs in the schools. It's allowing them through a certified handler. And in speaking with Howard Swamaco, the principal at Howard Swamaco, there's a number of individuals who come in to Howard Swamaco. Under that scenario with their, as a volunteer handler and with their dog. So now that we have a formal process. I think it's, it's now an opportunity for our buildings and our staff who are passionate about having that socially emotional needs met. Through having dogs in the schools to be able to go out and, and get that. And we have the contacts for those organizations to allow that to happen. While we address the issue of the liability.
Please.
So you're saying that if a teacher wanted to go and get their dog certified, they could do that?
They, they can get their dog certified. They can bring it to a hospital. They can bring it to a nursing home. They can bring it. All those places because they, they're volunteering in those situations. If you are an employee. You can't volunteer for your employer. You can't, you can't say, I'm going to work for my employer, but you don't worry, you don't have to pay me because I'm, I'm just want to do this. That the law doesn't allow that. So that's why that liability insurance doesn't cover them if they would bring their dog to work.
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
I would like to move this forward. As someone, I don't remember if it was Brian or Andrew said. That we can always amend this later on as soon as we do find a solution to let the teachers be involved. While they're doing their work as a teacher. So I would like us to. To pass this, but I beg you, could we please come up with a different name than curricular dog? Perhaps we could call them school dogs or companion dogs? Anybody? Help?
I don't think, I don't know if everyone has the same aversion. Go ahead, Andrew.
I, I don't, I don't like it and I, I get it. I just, everything I, everything else I think of is, is worse. Or, or, well, in that, in that it creates us, I, any other word I use creates a. Argument for a loophole that does not exist where, in the, the rules, right? So at least here. Hey, can I do this? Do I have, is my dog a curricular dog? Well, no, it's not because you're in, you're employed, so you can't, you can't do it. Where if you call it, you know, if you, I thought about, if you, if it's a policy about non-service dogs. Well, then people are going to think, well, I have a non-service dog, why, you know, or. I just, I don't know what else you could, I'm open, I'm open to changing it later if we find the, the better word. Certainly, it's an easier policy amendment, but I, I just don't think there's a better word.
Okay, is there any further discussion before we vote? Go ahead.
So the hospitals are going to stop this too, not because there's not nurses bringing them in. If nurses would try to bring them in, then it wouldn't work because they're employed. Set the deal?
Go ahead, Brian.
We don't set policies for hospitals if they want to put themselves in liability with that. That's their decision. If the police firm wants to put themselves in liability for it, that's their decision. We're responsible with the Green Bay School District. If other districts haven't done it, they want to put themselves in liability and risk for it. That's their choice, so.
Go ahead, Vicky.
I, I think that's ultimately what. What is your decision tonight? Melissa's advising that it could put us at great risk liability-wise if something did happen. But it's up to the board ultimately to make the decision whether you want to take that chance or move forward with this.
Like so much that we do as a district. We are limited and. And very constrained by statute, by law. And yeah, this isn't perfect. So, anyway. That's my comment. Anybody else want to chime in before we take a vote? Go ahead, Lynn.
Would the chair entertain a motion to change the name of this to school dogs?
I would entertain a motion. I wouldn't deny that. I don't know if you'll get with the result you want, but we can have a go.
I'll second.
Let her make the motion first.
I move that we call the dog program school dogs rather than curricular dogs.
Okay, I will, I will second the amendment to change curricular dogs to school dogs. Which I believe is what happened there.
Okay, discussion or questions? Brian.
Could a school dog be viewed as mascot?
No, it's a valid question. Yeah, um, all right. We have a lot of stuff to, to take care of yet tonight, so let's, let's kind of move this along, I think. As a good question, but we're still going to vote on this amendment, so. Yep, yep. Did you want to make, did you want to propose an amendment to the? I don't know. I don't know an answer. I don't have an answer to that. What we, you know, the, the words we use are, are. What we, you know, the, the words we use are, are important. At times, this one feels a little squishy around the edges, but I, but it's what we call it, you know, is important. So is there any other questions or considerations? Oh, go ahead.
I feel like there's not necessarily an existing name for what you would call these dogs. So I think whatever name you guys decide on will kind of just become like a new norm. Kind of how slang picks up and drops. If we call it a school dog, I don't think people, once they know what a school dog is, I don't think people are going to be like, is that a mascot? Because it's just something that people know and understand. If it's a curricular dog, at first that might kind of seem hard around the edges, a little weird. But then people are going to understand that a curricular dog is a school dog. So I think either one would work and people get used to it and it can just be a new norm.
People adapt. So go ahead, Laura.
One more question. Do we know, what is the, how many teachers, social workers, employees, do they currently? Are they bringing their dogs currently? Or that's what we don't know? Or is that why this is being addressed or kind of why now? I mean, I, I understand not to reprimand being proactive, you know, so before there's an incident, but just curious.
So our, our current policy, the service animal policy does not permit therapy animals, therapy dogs. That's been our position. The, the requests normally go through Claudia Hendrickson's office. And we have routinely said for the various reasons of the risks of, of the dogs, the answer had been no. Since COVID, since we've been back from COVID, there has been, as you have seen on the news, as you've seen in the surrounding school districts, there has been this very intentional focus on increasing therapy dogs in schools because of the great importance through, for social emotional learning. And since our kids have come back from COVID. That then caused us to relook at our position, explore it, see where we could move on the position in the school district that would allow dogs in the schools for purposes of the curriculum and social emotional learning. And this is where we've arrived. There are other school districts nationwide that take this approach of the third party handlers coming in. By and large, this is the group that I'm in. This is the approach they've taken, the approach the neighbors have taken is not very widely done across the nation because of the liability issues.
Brian and Andrew.
Just a point and border, we're on a motion to switch school dog where it says curricular dog. That's a motion on the floor.
Yep. I think maybe we should take a vote on that first. Unless Andrew wants to speak to that motion.
Oh, I'll wait and see what happens as well.
Okay. All right, you need to both, uh, voice vote, Kinsey.
I put a motion in here.
Excellent.
We're going to try it this way. I just want to read it out loud. It should pop up on your screen now. The recommended motion right now is that Board of Education Policy 383.2, Curricular Dogs in the School Setting Be Renamed as 383.2 School Dogs in the School Setting As Presented Be Approved. Is that accurate?
You good with that? All right. And we, so we have a motion and a second and we're going to be able to take a vote. So, but I think we're ready to vote.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion did not carry. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, yes. McCoy, no. Leighton and Warren, no. Welch, yes. Lyerly, no. Mills, no. Gerlach, yes.
Okay, motion fails. We're going to go onto the original motion, Andrew.
This was probably obvious and covered already, but if the, the, the type of, if there is a definition of a, a therapy dog, that's not a social emotional dog and is not a service dog, which is covered already permitted under ADA, why, why is it not therapy dogs? I'm probably missing, am I missing something obvious?
Brian.
It's great. My guess is that we're going to want to make sure that we're tying this into some educational purpose as well. So by utilizing, I, I'm supporting the use of the word curricular dogs because then we are tying it into an educational purpose. We're also looking at, if I were looking at an IEP, I'd be using that phrasing as well. And if I might be stretching with this, but if an IEP is written with that and goes to another district, they can recognize why we're using curricular dog as opposed to therapy dog, uh, social emotional dog on there. So just my opinion.
Okay. Go ahead, Lynn.
I, I had a different understanding at the last meeting. I thought we were told that therapy dog would be, could be confused with some, something else, that that was the reason we couldn't use the term therapy dog.
I apologize. I don't remember that from the last meeting. I'm sorry.
All right. You all ready to move on? Yep, I know. So go ahead, Laura.
I appreciate that you answered the questions that we had time to have a discussion. I think some people saw it in the work session, but may have not have really been able to dig into it. And then with all of the concerns and things that we had shared with us this week, I think it's important that we were able to recap the reasons why through this discussion.
Okay, so, so basically it sounds like our board, I hope you all agree with this, would like to be open to some kind of evolution of this policy. When, if there's any change or if we can somehow, I don't know, have it evolve into something that more people, more people are happy with. So I don't know if you can, if you can monitor that process. Thank you. I appreciate it. So, all right, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Andrew Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, no. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes. Gerlach, yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, we're on to discussion. This is the final, final item on our agenda for tonight. I think, uh, who, who will be coming to the table?
Josh.
Oh, Josh, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Might we take a break?
Can we, what? Do you think this will be quick? I don't know about that actually. I, I think I'm inclined to say yes. It's been a bit. So if, if we can take a very, very brief bake, break, okay, we'll be back in like three minutes. Okay? All right. Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're back. Um, yep, we're ready to go. So we're going to have a discussion about the Facilities Master Planning Task Force Recommendation and Referendum Updates. Is it possible that we can start with the referendum updates? I, you, Josh did a, a very, very helpful document that lists everything from the last referendum. And I, I, this is just really going to be helpful going forward as we monitor the process. A lot of things are already in place or at least have started. Some are still waiting to be started, but that's, we're really not that far into this process for this last referendum. So it's gonna, it's going to take a while for these all to be completed. But to me, I look at this and I think this is our community supporting a lot of work that needs to be done. And, and I, I'm really, I don't know, I just find this very helpful. So I just wanted to thank you first, Josh.
You're welcome. You'll see the majority of them are in an architectural design phase, which is a pretty long phase. I'm, I'm finding out this is kind of my first rodeo through referendum projects. It's a whole bunch of behind the scenes stuff that takes a lot of time upfront to get those, those projects going. Whether it's soil samples, surveying, permitting, all of those sorts of things are kind of included in that phase.
Okay. Go ahead, Andrew. There's not really a presentation, but we're, did you want to talk about the referendum projects? Okay, go ahead.
So I, I think that and this is, this is not a, this is not a reflection, anything that, that you're doing. Cause I, I think, I think this is the district side of, of this has been great, but I, more, more of a cross-section, the city needs to have some things happen before next year. And I, I, I'm thinking about West. I'm not limiting my thinking to West. Is there, is there not some, some things? I know there've been some discussions about the West Auditorium or the West Weight Room or certain things that could, could move first. And for two reasons. First, first of all, I think when, when people, even if the math might be right, even if the construction logic might be right, there's still, there's still a problem when they see, you know, they're, the West sees something get pushed back and the wealthier parts, but quite frankly, the wealthier parts of town get things started sooner. Now, I may know that there's some math, some construction behind that, but it doesn't change the fact that if, if Wes can't get the field right now, then there, there's a crack in the weight room floor. And it is not your, it's not your fault that someone put a weight room on, on the, the second floor. You, you, that was before you, that was before people who are here today. You wouldn't do that again today probably, but how do we, can we make sure that people are going to get? People need to see that they're getting something and they need to see if, if we want to go to a referendum, it is at our peril to be asking again when people feel again, whether the math is right or not, if people feel that we're being asked again before things are, they're seeing something, people need to see things happening in all parts of the city is kind of my point.
Yeah, but I understand that. I, I think there are a couple of things we can do. We are making good progress specifically at West. We've got, we've got a kind of a draft of that weight room. We've, we've met with administration and the athletics team there to know what we're doing with the existing weight room, which is going to, going to now house our unified wrestling team. That'll be the new wrestling room. So the, the plans are coming along nicely there. I, I don't know when we're going to get a shovel in the ground on that. I could continue to provide drafts of those projects as we get them. So that they can see that the, the plans are, are going in. I know I've also been talking with Retler, who has all three of the stadium bids about, about signage at the active construction sites, but then also a West High School, kind of like a, a coming soon with the, with concept drawings and things like that. I, I know it's hard. It's only been six months since we, we passed that referendum and these are some very large projects.
Okay. Go ahead, James.
So I, I just want to be clear and follow up what Andrew said. Several of these projects are in architectural design phase. So I'm interpreting that as there's activity, it's been assigned to architectural review. So we have received feedback about the projects at West. So just a couple of real concrete questions. Were any of these projects so available so that we didn't have to go through the architectural design process at the length that it's currently taken, right? So fast tracking is easy to say, but sometimes irresponsible to do, right? And I recognize you were clear upfront that the West additions were more complicated zoning wise and building wise than other shovel-ready kind of projects. So has there been a delay in acting on any of the West projects? No, not at all. We're, you're, you're correct. The, the stadium project in particular is more complicated than, than the others. And I think we've discussed that at the board table here. I, I can review that right now for people who may be hearing this for the first time. At, at Preble, we're able to go in and do the turf without touching any of the grandstands or any of the outbuildings because we're, that site is very constrained. If you look at it from a Google Maps perspective, you've got Dan's Avenue and you've got residences on the other side. And you've got Newberry and Baston, I think, I'm not sure exactly. But you know, the, the roads are where the roads are. You cannot change the dimensions of that place. So within those bounds, we can get the field down, which is not, not an ideal dimension if we were starting with the, you know, acres and acres of, of fresh farmland, right? Dealing with the set that we have, we, we get that field down, we can have a, a season. Then after that, we do an additional phase of construction, which includes the grandstands, press box, all of that. At West, we want to do it right and we have the dimensions available to us to do it right. That requires changing the dimensions of the track and the field, which would require us if we were to go through the same exercise at West to basically have no fences, no grandstands, no press box for for the fall season. If if it were, if that were even possible. So that's why the the West one is starting a little bit later, because we can't build inside out. If Preble were in the same situation, if we were able to build Preble, frankly, how we would want to build a stadium, Preble would be taking longer too, but given the constraints of that site. We are not able to change the dimensions, so so we don't have to be as disruptive to that property. Now, at West, the other projects I I think are progressing nicely. We've been bringing the architectural and design services to the board for all of these projects, so you can go back through history and and see that West and Western East and Preble, the non the non field projects were among the first that we brought to the board because we wanted to get started as soon as possible on those. We are we are running into some a little bit of weirdness in the the historic auditorium at West. We want to do something with that catwalk. There is very frightening. We would give a tour to any board member who has the the wherewithal to climb up the ladder to that catwalk. But what we're what we're also seeing is, you know, code is different now in terms of the snow load, right? So if you're going to be suspending something more modern from the ceiling, then there are other other things from a mechanical engineering standpoint that come into play. And we're working through those. I mean, these are the sorts of things that come up in the architectural and design phase. But that's also why for most of these projects, there's no such thing as the shuttle shovel ready project. It takes an immense amount of planning coordination.
Okay, Brian.
It's both have to do with West. You had mentioned before the quality of the stadium that West is going to have, then obviously you don't work for the WIA, but this will be an attractive spot for regionals or sectionals, I would assume for track. We would have the capacity for holding events that really showcase what has taken place out there once the stadium is done.
Yes, I think it's going to be the most impressive part will be the soccer field, to be honest with you. The width we're able to get on that. You know, track and field. It would be a good candidate for that, as as would probably frankly, the capacity at Preble and Preble in terms of the number of of spectators available is going to exceed, I think, 2,000 spectators. At at West, I'm not quite sure what we're going to get that capacity up to. But the width of that field at West is going to be 210 feet wide, which will give, you know, ample ample room on the sidelines. We'll be able to do regulation soccer fields with safely, which is a challenge when you when you're trying to stripe them on a football field.
I just want to thank you for all this work. This this is was so needed. I'm I don't I assume that the rest of you have all also been asked repeatedly. Are you going to be closing schools that you're using referendum money to fix? And thank you so much for identifying where you're holding it pending the outcome of the facility master plan. I I just think that we all need to make this very available to the public so that people understand that this is being carefully thought through and we're not spending money on a school that might be closed. And thank you. I was going to ask tonight what ASB means, but now I know because what that because our director of our auxiliary service building was named one of our outstanding administrators. Yes, thank you. So now I know what it means.
Well, let me tell the fans at home then. Yeah, it is. ASB stands for Auxiliary Services Building. That is where first of all, our district warehouse is a large portion of our shipping and receiving comes through that facility. And then on the other side of the building, that's our food service production center, which is kind of the hub of all of our food service activities. And then food goes on trucks and goes all over the city, but that's kind of where the where the magic happens, a lot of the magic.
Brian.
I see on here, there's a lot of roof studies at East West Franklin. I guess there's some other ones on there. Previously, we've had meetings regarding green energy and the social, I'm sorry, the sustainable initiatives of it. Are these roof studies going to be able to give us information on the viability of solar panels? Or would it give us at least a guideline? Do you know?
The roofs we're putting on should be able to accommodate solar panels. One issue that we've run into in the past is that our roofs are not in the in a good enough state to kind of support that additional weight. So all of these new roofs should be able to support it. I would say a separate survey needs to happen in terms of where to best get those solar panels in. That's on me to start up that that Green Committee. I know I've been in in touch with with some people on that, but we haven't quite cut up off the ground on that yet. Hopefully soon, once we get get through this phase of the facilities master planning.
James.
So I appreciate you calling out then that I see four projects that are on hold, I think, for the master facility plan out of, and I didn't do the count, but it seems like over 60 or so projects on the list. And so it has been asserted by some of the communications that I've received over the past couple of months that the school district and the board potentially acted in a physically irresponsible way by going to referendum in advance of the master facility plan being executed. Can you take a moment and kind of reframe the argument that was that it took place? You know, 18 months ago, as to why we went to referendum in advance of the master facility plan and how the selection of projects kind of played into those of confidence, understanding that the master facility plan was coming?
It's a really big question, James. So going back 18 months ago and thinking about that, no, the referendum that eventually passed in November of 2022, the the project selection was strategic. We picked locations. We we did know that this facilities master planning work was going on as well. That also started about 18 months ago. We we as an administrative team picked schools that were we in our estimation was not were not likely to be affected by a facilities master plan. At that time, we were thinking that the master plan would primarily affect elementary schools and then most of our secondary schools could handle things that we knew they needed. We didn't need to do a study to know that Southwest needs a new roof or that West needs a new stadium. For example, so those are what we really focused on. And then, you know, a good half of that referendum was on deferred maintenance needs, which again, we didn't need a facility study to know that we need new boilers, new windows. Those were known needs by the district. So we did. We did target buildings we thought were unlikely to be affected by the master plan. You'll see in that list and in some cases, we we guessed wrong. But we were able to not have expended money and and we're able to hold until we have a clearer direction on on where that's going to go. So that's kind of how this project list had developed. And it was important also for us to advantage of the opportunity we had with retirement of debt, right, where we could address some of these things without impacting the tax rate. In fact, our tax rate this last year was lowest it's ever been. Or since I could only go back to 1984, I suspect it's the lowest it's ever been. And that will that would be the goal. Once you task administration with figuring out how to execute this 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 master plan or all or some portion of the recommendations from the task force, I know that Angie and her team are going to be working very hard to make sure that we keep that tax rate nice and predictable. And yeah, so that's kind of the history of of how things went went down with the project list. Is there anything, any other question?
Just to follow up. So in my recollection, the district came with a plan for defeat defeasment, if I'm saying that correctly, right? Where we save the taxpayers a significant amount of money on interest by paying off debt early, which allowed us to take action on this deferred maintenance and some projects that we knew that the public was considering important around athletics, which allowed us to keep the tax rate stable, because without going out and authorizing the district to borrow money, we actually would have a problem, right? With that, with the variability of that mail rate, which would then be us coming back and asking for a significant increase in mail rate or taxes, right? In order to do what we knew was coming was a long term strategic plan at facilities here as we evolve our district. Does that summarize that the steps of how we got here, spending some money in advance of having a complete facility master plan in place?
Yes, you're hired, James. Is it? That doesn't work, does it? Yeah, I think that that characterizes it quite well. Our goal in the in the history of of G Vaps has been keep that tax rate steady and you'll see when Angie presents her budget next next month, the history of our mill rate is remarkably, you see no spikes, no valleys, you see over the course of a couple of decades, a a slight downward trajectory in terms of the property tax rate. And if we were, we had that opportunity with defeasance to save millions of dollars for the taxpayers and interest payments, which also cleared the way to take on additional debt while still keeping that tax rate flat. And you're absolutely correct. If that had not a path past our the the tax rate would have fallen and we would have probably celebrated that, right? But then we knew that we still had these needs, the needs that were addressed in November. Plus, we knew we had needs coming up out of this facilities master plan. And then you're asking for a pretty sizable tax rate increase, which is you know, which we had, we've never tried in the past.
Okay, are there any more questions about the update of the referendum projects? All right. So then let's move on to the facilities master planning task force recommendation. I believe we added this meeting or this agenda item because board members had had some questions and some possibly some concerns that they wanted to address. So have at it. Go ahead.
So what I want to know is what do we have to have prepared for June 5? Some of the speakers this evening said, you know, what are we going to do? I guess we have three choices we can choose from. Is that true? Can we make a motion to accept it as is, to reject it, to postpone it, or to take parts of it? That's what I
Did you? Did you read this document? Okay, yes, all right. Oh, James, go ahead.
Um, so I think that we are not constrained in our options around June 5, right? So I just want to pull us back. You know, we gave guidance on to the the task force and there was a numbered list of items and some of them were referred to this evening and at the listening sessions and used as evidence that, you know, the work's not done, right? I think is the best way to to place that. Now, I want to call out two items. The first one on which addresses equity and equitable distribution of the improvements. The wording of this, or if we recall, we created this in advance of the the primary work of the task force. So the the wording is soft because mindset was we're going to be improving things, right? And therefore, we need to make sure that as we spend money, we need to do that in an equitable fashion. The inverse has really become the issue is as we close schools is the same equity lens was it used? And we did not provide that task force with the necessary data, necessary tools to really speak on that. So the 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 recommendations that we have are are kind of insensitive to equity issues to a degree, right? So like the project list that you provided that we went to referendum on last year, there are some things that are pretty well known that need to be fixed, right? We have a school that is sinking, right? And then there are things that represent opportunity and rerouting. So I think that there are opportunities for the districts to present on June 5. What are those actionable items that represent the, okay, this really has to take place, right? And this checks all the boxes on all the guidance, right? It reduces costs. It will move a population from a crumbling school to a a school that represents improvement for them. And because of co-location, it's minimum change and we're talking about full populations and things like that. And so I think Vicky's memo did a great job of outlining a couple of hits that aren't referendum dependent and makes sense. And we can, we may be able to craft some motions on specific to that. And I think um, now, this is where I don't necessarily become friends with you, Josh. When I look at the timeline, I would have kind of done, and I think the listening sessions have informed me that the order seems to be backwards. The initial referendum dependent projects in the earliest years are now, as you look at it and say, is it equitable? Need more time, need a study, need a boundary task force and everything. And I'm fearful that we can get all of that done and be ready for referendum next April. The new school on the west side, where there are three completely underutilized schools in the proximity that would collapse into one school, is it pushing populations and changing feeding patterns and all of those things that really lend themselves to needing an equitable, you know, steady and a boundary task force feel like a earlier referendum ask, and that's happening five years from now, right? So I would have yeah.
Josh didn't put that together. He's he's underwater with work, so it's it's something that I grabbed a couple of people and it's literally a starting point for the board.
So I guess where I was going with that is I think that as we prepare for June 5, right? And we come to the table, giving an eye at are there those in in collaboration with the district, those projects that really do represent the least amount of change, move populations from a older school to new construction or what have you that we can craft a referendum around. Feels like, you know, something that does not bind the the board and the district to an entire set of changes that some of which really, I think, do need more time. And I think Vicky's memorandum us directing the district to take those next steps on those bigger questions feels right. But the budget and the impending cliff all But the budget and the impending cliff also feels like we gotta take some action in the near term, right? So, um. Yeah, so I, I want to say that the task force did what it was asked to do. Um, and I recognize that we didn't enable some of them. Those, them to actually be successful in checking all the boxes on our kind of evaluation framework. So I appreciate the district putting together the thought starters on, on, on kind of what could be some model, um, motions that we take. And none of them are up or down vote on schema twelve. Um, and so. Thank you.
Uh, so thank you, James, that's a, that was a good starting point. I, I just want to just kind of summarize the way I feel about this June fifth thing. Um, I agree with James, um, I am not prepared to say I approve this plan. I am not prepared to stay, throw the whole plan out and start over, I don't approve any of it. I am prepared to move forward as James has outlined with the things that can be done and should be done. Because we can't wait, we have to get started because of the, the fiscal realities. On the other hand, I don't feel bound to have everything done by June fifth. I do believe we need to move along and every two weeks we need to be making progress and we need to get this done. You know, get the whole plan done, we can't not implemented, but planned and agreed upon. Within the next couple of months, but not by June fifth.
Alright. Is there anybody else? Did, um, Vicky, did you have anything to add?
If I could speak to the timeline, just briefly. Keeping in mind that, um, we are waiting for the states to give us their budget numbers. We have to move forward as if it's about a twenty million dollar deficit that we're facing. Anything that we don't deal with. Building-wise, facility-wise, we will have to address in other ways, uh, and we've talked about. This, this would mean increased class sizes, it would mean we'd have to have a discussion about programming and do we put some on hold? And it potentially, if we don't meet that deadline of the budget, um, but being forced to close schools.
Brian.
I understand the concern with the June fifth deadline, but the problem is also that we're an elected body. And every year we have either two or three of us that are up for election and that changes the makeup. And some of these are decisions that should have been. No fault to the boards previously, but some of these are decisions that should have been taken place ten years ago. And if we, and just in my opinion, and if we don't set some sort of deadline on there to have. A significant plan moving forward, this is just going to keep drawing out. And I understand your concern with June fifth as being, and the same concern that I've heard from other people on this. But this board will by the nature of an elected body. At risk, change constantly. Th- this is, this is a charge that this board, this seven people have taken place. So in a year, one of us could be off the board and I recognize I'm not saying kick it out down for a year or anything. But that's why I'm agreeing with the June fifth to have a, a pretty strong plan in place, right, to move forward, but so.
Okay, Laura.
I agree, I agree with James and Lynn, I think my concern is that we've looked at the quantitative, right? And but we have, we need to look at the qualitative data and that's, um, I don't. I think exactly what was said, the task force did what we asked them to do to go in and look at the buildings and, and create their, their assessment of them. Uh, and I had never, um. Anticipated that would be the only thing that we looked at, so I'm glad that we're, we're actually acknowledging that we're going to look at the whole picture. And I, I hope that, um. Everybody understands that it was never going to be that was without looking at how this would impact. The communities because it's very important, so, um, I understand the urgency. And, um, this is what we're charged to do, so we need to figure it out, but we also need to be mindful of the communities and the students and families. Absolutely as much.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Nancy.
So how do I prepare for June fifth? We can talk to one person at a time, but then if we talk to another person about the same thing, can we do that? Or is that a walking quorum? We can't do it, can we? So I just, so then see, I'm, I'm back to do, I just sit and make my own decisions and then say, make motions for June fifth? I don't know what to do. School me.
Go ahead, Andrew.
In my individual opinion, as an independent elected official, how I manage my conversation with fellow board members. Is my personal business. I, I certainly do not. Go board member to board member saying if I change this motion like this, will you, because that is a walking quorum. But the contents of my telephone conversations with other board members in my individual opinion is my personal business. That's, that's me.
Um, I, I just don't hold June fifth sacred. I just don't believe that there's any, the world is going to come to an end if we don't have this all done by June fifth. So, um, I, again, I want to get started tonight and on June fifth, I want to move forward. Um, and I hope that maybe we can have this all done by end of July. No, does that scare you?
No, I mean, it, it doesn't scare me, I. I get, I have, I guess, two things. To offer my opinion about, um, and maybe you're not even asking, but my mic's on now. The. There are some big decisions, um, but just because they're big, let's please don't. Let's, please don't stop interrogating them until we know that. It's not going to happen. Or, um, we know that, um, that's the, that's the path we want to take forward. Um, I don't want to lose momentum on this process, it's been a very long process to this point. Um, I feel like while there is some controversy, as you're all hearing. We are getting people kind of on board with the work of the task force and understanding it. And understanding the, the plight of the district and the point of going through this exercise and, and, and all of that. And I would hate to run into summer and then we, we kind of cool it. Um, for a while, so yeah, Laura, if it, if it's very important to the board. That we take that next step and we look at. How these changes can, can be applied or cannot be applied equitably. But let's get to that work, um, in my opinion. Um, and then one more thing about, about deadlines, I, I think that, like the deadline, deadline. For the purposes of preparing a referendum is going to be January, right? That's when we have to start getting our question together, the, the language of the question together. That's when Angie's got to figure out how, you know, the bonds are going to be issued and, and all that kind of stuff. So we got, we kind of need to know the contents of the referendum by January and, um. It could be very large, it could be not so large, that's when we, we get Angie and her team in, you know, to see what the, the tax rate compare. We had one more. Should have written it down.
We can turn your mic back on if we need to. Go ahead, Vicky.
Um, so if you would, thank you, Josh. That was spot on, um, if you reference the memo, uh, I talk about what we're looking for from the board. And what my recommendation would be is that you give us some direction on pieces of the proposal. The recommendations for us to begin the next phase. And that phase is, uh. Initiating an RFP. And having an equity analysis done so that we can comfortably come to the board and say. The feasibility of this part of the recommendation is thumbs up, we can do this. And it would be in the best interest of our community or we come back and say, this part doesn't make sense. Here are some recommended tweaks to that part. Uh, so this is very, there's fluidity to this. Um, the, the major step, the next step would be getting some direction from the board on where to go. So to your question, Nancy, what do I do, how do I prepare? You start thinking about, um, each pieces of that proposal and listening to the feedback. Again, I stress, this board has gone above and beyond to, to get that. I, I see the emails, I, I know you've been busy, so I appreciate that and we know there's another opportunity on Wednesday. So you're looking at that, you're listening to the feedback from the community and you're thinking, is that something that. Absolutely positively needs to happen that I need to support right now, do I need more information? That, that's how you should be preparing for June fifth.
James.
I appreciate that, um, and I also appreciate the fact that, that the timeline presented is. Let's call it a very rough draft and an initial thought starter. Um, but it does service the question or, uh, uh, it raises the question of. Um, how and when we're going to go to referendum, right? I think we all are on this trajectory where we think we need a question as early as next April. In order to make the return on investment and the savings make sense. Um, the, when I look at the timeline. Um, it looks like it goes into, it's kind of split into two parts, right? Execute the K through eight s- strategy, right? Which is referendum dependent and then new facility. Um, and it comes later. Um, the, the, the timing on the, uh, the. Oh, the timing of the projects. Concerns me because we have one chance to go to referendum. In advance of twenty-six, twenty-seven, because it's going to take a year to build it, you know, and all of the pre-decasing work that has to take place. In order to execute, so. The timeline as it stands informs me that if we go to question in April, it's going to be big. Right, you have, you're executing two significant additions and the necessary improvements. To move the populations around, so gymnasiums, whatever. So as I look at this, if you were to ask me, I know that mail rate is a key component of a decision of how much money we ask for. But what we can pass is another key component of the, the question. And if we go out and you say, in order to execute in this order. We're going to have a significant question in April, I, I really think we need to synthesize that and have from the district. What that amount looks like, uh, as a key component of you, us giving you direction. Uh, so yes, start the feasibility study and, and go in a certain direction. I, I, I need to know, you know, what, what that looks like. Because it's a component of how I decision, um, the motions that I want to take. And, because if you look at it, um, it only closes. A couple additional schools than the non-referendum questions and the new school, right? It's like two or no, three more facilities. So given the fact that there's ambiguity around what the state's going to do. And we're so close to the previous referendum, I, I just want to make sure that I have that information before we go forward.
Can I ask a money question, this flat-out money question, and I don't know if Angie's still here, um. If the state comes through with, and this seems to be the general. Um, indication that they will raise the revenue limit. Maybe, um, have a stronger reimbursement for special ed funding. And also increase possibly the per pupil. If that happens, and we all hope that happens. How will that affect? Um, our budget deficit, because I'm going to assume that will help everything. But it won't actually take care of, it won't be enough to take care of that budget deficit.
I think that you've teed Angie up really nicely for her presentation next month.
Oh, is it, okay, if, if this is going to happen next month, great. Um, I just, I'm looking, I'm trying to look out ahead and, and, um, you know, I'm afraid that what will happen is they'll, they'll come. The state will come through in some manner. And, uh, our larger community will be like, oh, there, it's taken care of. And, um, and I, I, I feel like whatever the state might come through for us. Isn't likely to take care of that deficit.
Yeah, you're right, Laura, so, um, when I bring the preliminary budget, uh, on June twelfth to the board. We'll take a look at some scenarios, because again, as I've talked about before. Because we don't know what the state budget is going to give us, everything in the model, everything in our projections is going to be based on. You know, my best guess, right? Um, and of course, what we're hearing and what other, you know, what our neighboring districts are using for like the per pupil increase. And what we're using for CPI increase, of course, all of that is up in the air until we actually know what happens at the state level. So this year will be and look a little bit different when I come to the board. Because last year we knew exactly what we were getting for revenue, so it was really easy to project. Um, and this, this, you know, this presentation won't be, I don't think, as meaningful as last, as last year's. But at least we're going to have an idea and we're going to be able to show, you know, I'll be able to show you. Kind of what our deficit looks like with the assumptions that are in the model. And then, of course, if we get more per pupil, that deficit's going to go down a little bit. If we get less, it's going to go up a little bit, so at least you're going to be able to see that trajectory over the next four to five years. And then we'll also present a couple of different scenarios and CPI increases to kind of show you what that compounding effect does. As we've talked about many, many times, you know, the higher that CPI increase, the higher that deficit is. You know, assuming that, um, staffing stays, um, stays the same, of course, but it kind of compounds throughout. And, and so you'll kind of see that model, you'll see the Baird model, you've seen it before, but we'll give you some scenarios, we'll talk through what that looks like. Um, and then, of course, you know, we just have to see what the state does before we can move forward.
So even as we chip away at that deficit.
Yes.
Regardless of what the cit- this, the, um, the state of Wisconsin does for us. It still won't solve the problem, the other problem, which is one in four seats in our district are empty.
Yeah.
And in just a few years, it's going to be one in three. And that drag, like, we're, we're, we're supporting infrastructure. With tax dollars that we don't need and every, every data point tells us that, that enrollment's going to go down a little bit.
Right, and as, yep, and as you said, Laura, so declining enrollment, right? That just equals less revenue for the district, so every year as we decline in enrollment, that's less money coming into the district as revenues. So then, of course, we have to address those expenditures because we need a balanced budget.
And it also still, and, and even in spite of all of that, and I'm just speaking for myself now. I still want our students to have up-to-date, modern facilities. And to have those spread equitably throughout our district. We just, in the last referendum, did tens of millions of dollars of investment on the east side. At Dan's, at Sullivan, at Eisenhower, at East, at Washington. I'm probably leaving some out here, Baird, uh, well, and then we built a whole new school. But Edison got a huge amount, like, we did that on the east side to, to address the issues there. And I'm just going to say this, I want to do the same kind of thing on the west side. Even though the numbers are going down, so consolidating, but also offering, because those students are worthy too, right? We just, we have, you know, this declining enrollment on the west side, so we can. Consolidate those schools into a new structure that will, will be, uh, every bit as nice as Baird. That is my hope for our community and our community has a record of supporting that. So, um, I'm hoping that, um, you know, as we look forward, that this is something that we can make happen as a district. So anyway, Andrew.
Um, I'm, I'm. Being a little careful here, I, I don't want to get too deep into the merits tonight before we have the public hearing on the twenty. The twenty-fourth, but I guess I, I feel like I do have to say that there are. There are other considerations besides. Just the money and just the math, especially, especially if the state comes through a little bit better versus if it comes in a little bit worse. There might not be much that can be done that makes sense for a school that is, is targeted to be. One-third full, right? But like, people in the community may, may want to save some less money. To keep a neighborhood school in a certain area. to keep a neighborhood school in a certain area. And that's that is part of the, I'm just saying that's part of the discussion as well. And it's a part of the discussion that maybe fits more if the state does better with the budget and fits less if the state doesn't, right? There are, I think there is a, you know, there is a discussion to be had about how big would you do a new west side elementary, right? We tended to talk about six hundred, we have policy, I think, for for six hundred. You know, I don't have a complete opinion on on eight hundred plus in elementary, but there are other pieces of this puzzle, and I think these are some of the pieces that probably won't be figured out on on June 5th. But there are, you know, there may be motions that are not are things that are not in schema twelve right now that a motion might be made about, and that that is a possibility too.
I've said this before with with our opportunities here, this is this is a once in a generation change. And when we look at it, we need to recognize, which we all do, that we represent the whole district. And we've we've looked at equity and making sure that both sides of the city are represented down there. But when we look at it, we have seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand students, we have forty two buildings currently, and looking at the the big picture with that. And this is our opportunity for a once in a generation really improving the access for all of our students on here, so.
I have some questions for Vicky, if I may. So this RFQ to complete equity analysis, about how long a time do you think will be invested in getting that analysis done? That's my first question.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be a simple one. We're slotting for the twenty three, twenty four school year. It's in its entirety to do those type of analysis. I don't know if you have a different prediction on how quickly we could get something back.
Well, in terms of a product to react to, I think that we're probably talking about a month or month and a half. I don't think that that's going to be a massive project, given how the schemas are drawn, right? To an extent, there's already, there's already prescription baked into those schemas, right? So they're not just starting from scratch. Now, what could take some time is as we or as the board decides how they want our community to react with those recommendations and provide feedback and and stuff like that. That could take some time depending on on what models you go there, but the actual analysis, I I guess a little more optimistic about, you know, getting some kind of recommend impartial recommendation back through the lens of equity fairly quickly.
Go ahead, continue with my questions. The next one is we're not talking about this boundary task force anymore. That's going to come after this equity insight we get, right?
That could actually be simultaneous. The board could give direction on June 5th that we initiate the process. But to Andrew's point at the roundtable, we'd be looking for some type of guidance from the board on what a task force should be made up of.
And the final question is this thing that came up just recently about the concern about disrupting the IB, the progression of the IB program. Have you had a chance to think about that and see if that is a concern and and it's gonna be easy to address?
Easy to address? I think we have a lot of options that we would want to take a look at and potentially present to the board some modifications to a plan that would ensure the the continuity of the program. Oh, yes.
Laura. In looking at the equity analysis, I would guess there's going to be a piece of that where it's going to look at our demographic data in our schools. And I just wanted you to have the opportunity to speak on that. I know earlier we had a speaker who said that we had some challenges with our data integrity regarding the school in one of the schools. I wonder if you could talk to that and how we're going to ensure that we have accurate data and the most up to date data for our equity analysis.
Sure, I can. I mean, the statement has made it a little bit easier on us compared to when we initially engaged ATS and R in that the twenty two, twenty three demographic data is now up on my stash. They were like two years behind on that, so it's very hard to, you know, to reconcile the the demographic data. I guess I'm not really too concerned about being able to provide accurate data about where our students live and and, you know, various pieces of various pieces of attributes about a student that are state and federally reported, right? Those are fairly tightly, there are tight processes around how that data entry happens, where that data store and when it's updated. So I think the attributes in question will be fairly straightforward to get over there.
Clarification for what Josh is saying is that if someone were to, I don't value the information on the state report cards very often, except for the demographics and the makeup of the building is pretty concrete information. And when you're talking wise dash data, it's pretty accessible and breaks it down pretty well. And you have the opportunity to look at it as a district, you also have an opportunity to look at it as a building. So when residents or school board members are concerned that that information shows up pretty easily on there. And I would view it as the gold standard as far as what we can use for consistency and to make sure that our data is the most up to date. It's what the state uses for high stakes testing, it's what the state uses for the report card, which outside of that data, I don't really care about other than in this particular case, the demographic data is pretty considerate or consistent on it.
Okay, Josh.
Yeah, just two things really quick, and I know it's getting late. Number one, the one key piece of information that's required to do this sort of analysis is the student's resident address, which the state would not have. So it's not like we can just like take it directly from the state. Number two, our reality in our classrooms often differs what is actually reported to the state, given the, you know, the nature of the snapshot, the mobility within our district, the the chronic absenteeism within our district. All of those are challenges to to make internal numbers match the state numbers because we know kind of what's actually happening, but then there's what we're permitted to report to the state. So we're never going to match a hundred percent.
James.
A series of two questions. First for Vicky and for Josh, because I think the two of you can answer it. So if we engage a third party and we start an equity study, I don't, I can't envision how we can in parallel do a boundaries task force, because one feels like a precedent task and provides input into the other out there. So when we look at the timeframe, and this is what was my concern about the referendum question put. And when we say this portion of the schema, we really need to look at through an equity lens, right? We feel like and we've heard from the community, there is impact and it's our job to make sure that for our individual board member and for the school district that we service the entire community. And we can say that on the previous referendum, there was a concentration on the east side, which is factual and it's all good, but there was no closures involved. So the impact to students that we're dealing with through this master facility plan is innately different than, and we can't compare it one to one, right? Yes, there was east side investment, west side. But when you start talking about closures of schools and changing the feeding patterns, whatever, there was not as we weren't talking about, you know, one fourth of the students or in the district being impacted through our K through eight strategy and the closure. So I'm very interested in getting this right. And I'm not wanting to curtail the the studies and the dedication that we have to making sure that through an equity lens that we're doing the right thing in order to make a referendum window, right? I just want to make sure that as we go forward, yes, it may take a month to have a third party provide us some data. I would not schedule a month for reaction. And I think we we need to impanel a representative task force to look at the equity. And then, you know, we're talking about the the boundary changes, we have to be very thoughtful about those as well. And historically, Andrew may be able to do a better job, you know, obviously than me, about how long it actually takes to impanel, go through the process, get the data and whatever. And, you know, there's just not a lot of time. So I think we just need to make sure that we don't shortcut the engagement with the community for referendum cycles, right?
My thought on doing the boundary task force simultaneously was really in the back of my head, a plan B. Because we'll need an alternative and it could end up being that we look at just changing boundaries, depending on what direction the board goes. I'm just trying to think ahead.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, I would prefer I would prefer our community kind of interpreting the impacts of a professionally done study rather than getting a task force of forty two different stakeholders, each with their own self-interest. This is a very, very sensitive topic. It would be very difficult, I think, to make progress with that sort of a task force. That's just my opinion. And number two, as we, you brought up something that's been bugging me a little bit. As we as we assess the equitable impact of this set of changes, I hope that we continue to treat them as a piece, right? So, you know, we have heard recently, well, this does way too much for for the west side, like there's hardly any east side money being spent here. And there was just sixty million dollars spent on the east side of the twenty seventeen referendum with almost nothing for the west side. So one thing I don't want to have happen is you give us direction on these three things, but we hold on the thornier stuff. And then by the time we get to the end, we only have the thornier stuff left. And then, of course, that's going to have probably a disparate impact when you look at those changes in isolation, right? Because that's why you help them to be to begin with. So I just, I just wanted to make that point.
Go ahead, Lynn, and then.
I just, I'm wondering if there is some emotion that the staff is looking for tonight that we would know, you don't want anything, you don't want us to tell you to start on anything tonight.
Yep, there's no, we're not, we're not, it's not on the agenda to take action.
Okay, and so the next time when they, when we do provide some kind of instruction via emotion will be June 5th, right? And that doesn't mean that it has to be all said and done at that time.
I think it would be a good, a good time to just remind people that this discussion that we're having right here on a large scale, because we're a large district, is happening throughout our state in various places, people facing the same kinds of challenges. You know, how you handle that is, I mean, we're blessed with good staff who who know what they're doing and can help us navigate and a good board who knows how to work together and and a community that supports public education and has proven it over and over again. So I have hope that we can work this out as well. I'll say it again, like I said, the last meeting, it won't be easy. It will not be easy. And so, but it will be easier if we work together, so. I just want to also remind anyone who might be watching, if they haven't gone to bed already, it's getting late. On our website, we have a whole bunch of really great information, frequently asked questions. Laurie, I think, I don't know if Laurie's the one who keeps on top of that. But but honestly, there's, there's a bunch of questions that people have asked us and have been answered there, and you can go and read it all, and it's incredibly helpful. So, and I also remind people that on Wednesday, so May twenty fourth at four o'clock at Washington Middle School, we are going to have a public forum. You will, you can come and you get, I think, three minutes to speak and say whatever you want to us. We're gonna take our last, I think we're taking the last names at seven. So it there'll be a lot of time, but please come and and let us know what you're thinking. And I'm, you know, we want to hear from the public, so I just wanted to, I'm not saying we're done with questions, so please. James, go ahead, and then Brian.
Josh, you need to help me because I was, I was trying to see a way that we could action something to address a deficit. And the last thing you said was you hope that we don't piecemeal this to you. And so I just need to make sure that I, well, let me, let me finish. By the nature of identifying things that we can start on, it will leave the thornier subjects, right? But that is not the board saying we are going to reject or not action them. It's just that they're thorny and we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we get there. And so just help me, when you say, don't leave this, what is that? How does that manifest for you?
I'm sorry, my point was when you're looking at the equitable impact of of all the decisions you're about to make in the next year or however long it takes, let's take a look at the decisions in totality, even if they've already been made. Just in terms of that, that lens of of equity.
So well, so some of the criticism of the process to date was that we came up with a schema and then that we're doing an equity study after, right? That's a criticism of the process. So I hesitate to continue that pattern of saying, here's the schema. Now, treat the equity study as if this is a foregone conclusion. That's something that I grapple with, and I don't think it's responsible for us to do that because it may very well inform us that some of this should not or does not have to take place. So I don't, again, I'm at a place where I'm trying to, you know, eat this elephant and I don't want to stuff it all in my mouth at one time, right? And so I just, I need to make sure that I understand on June 5th, where you're not suggesting that to direct the district in totality of schema twelve to initiate studies on that you're okay with and expect us to have you or direct you to identify manageable pieces that like the other one, look at the security items, the roof, the the things that are the no brainers and deliver return on investment first, right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry if I didn't, if I wasn't clear on that.
All right, I'm gonna do a final call for questions. I know it's really late. Thank you, guys. I know you've all been here all day long. It's a, it's a lot to take on, but I feel like we made some progress tonight, so. Vicky, did you want to add anything? Are you good? All right. Um, all right, then with that, I would, Brian, dude, you're killing me.
So just for clarification on Wednesday, since it's still tied in with this, the session will be going from four until eight, last name will be taken at seven o'clock. Even if there's no one there, we will be waiting until seven o'clock, which I view as incredibly important, especially because we moved this to make sure committee members and community members will be able to be present based on work schedules and other opportunities. present based on work schedules and other opportunities. So so we have that clarification with the board and with the public that could be listening, that that is our goal there. And it'll be a listening session. So there will not be, I'm sorry, it'll be, there'll be no response from the board because of the way it's posted. So
You'll be asked to register, sign in.
Yeah.
And then we'll take people in the order they come. There's been a certain amount of planning, Lori's on top of this. It'll be, you know, there'll be a process so that, that even if there's nobody in the room and, you know, we're there till seven. That's, you know, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's no, there's, there's no end though, right? Four to eight is maybe what's on a blocked on a calendar, but if there's if there's 100 people and they all show up, then it's going to be nine something.
Yeah, I mean.
But if there's, if there's 20 people that are all there at 4 o'clock, theoretically, then it still is till at least seven.
Oh, yeah.
Because to make sure that people can.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And any more questions? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So all in favor? I oppose. We are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.